In the meeting of the city council and we're going to start with our item seventeen, our public hearing item, and I'm going to open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
I've only had workshops and staff and public input for a couple of months on this, so, thank you.
Staff and workshop and community input. Staff, community, and the workshop. And we will start with Ms. McPherson.
Honorable mayor and council members, Jane McPherson, financial services director. I'm here tonight to present for budget adoption, the fiscal year 2019-20 budget. Well, that doesn't want to work. We'll go to Plan B. Okay. This one? All right, here we go. Let's start all over. All right, synopsis. Well, this isn't working very well. Just stay right here. Public hearing to adopt the fiscal year 2019-20 operating budget, Measure X budget, the capital improvements program budget, accept the AB 1600 report for development impact fees, and authorize a lump sum prepayment to CalPERS. All budgets were presented at the council's April 17th workshop and all recommendations are contained in the budgets presented tonight. One adjustment was made to the sewer CIP as directed by council at the WIT workshop, and that was for the land outfall project at 2.5 million. So, the background for our budget. Our focus is maintaining service levels and cost containment. The proposed budget was built on council and departmental input. It's all recommendations from the April 17th workshop were included. Some highlights of the expenditures, the total proposed expenditures for 2019-20 is 157.6 million. This is for the general fund. Highlights include a rollover plus 2% of, for the CPI, for all maintenance and operations, for all department, general fund departments. All negotiated and known personnel and benefits increases for any MOUs that were approved or were estimated for those have yet to be negotiated. Additional 2.55 million in purse costs for a total of 23.42 million for fiscal year Some other interesting facts, and these are the items that were presented to you at the workshop. One-time discretionary increment, $1,098,031 discretionary increment ongoing, $1,094,164, and the budget neutral cost of 896,275. So, at this point, Deanna Larson will come and present the Measure X budget.
Good afternoon or good evening, honorable mayor and council members. Deanna Larson, Assistant City Manager. So, what I have for you is an overview of the Measure X spending plan, the seven-year preliminary expenditure plan, a report on the actions taken by the citizens oversight committee, and noting that no changes have been made to the spending plan since council review at the April 17th workshop. So, as a way of overview, there are two major categories in the spending plan, which is improved public safety services, including addressing homelessness and enhanced emergency service deployment model. That's about three, just under 3.5 million dollars. And then improved infrastructure projects in three categories: public safety infrastructure, street and road repairs and improvements, and beaches, beachfront, pier, and parks for a grand total in year one of just under 14 million dollars, which actually represents about 15, represents 15 months' worth of income. Before you is the detail in the category for improved public safety services in addressing homelessness. It includes additional homeless outreach team, crime suppression team, additional homeless outreach team, social worker, funding for homeless diversion prevention and reunification, contract sobering services, homeless hiring services, and an enhanced emergency service delivery model for the fire department. We do want to note that well funds are allocated towards the homeless hiring services programs. We did not receive any responses to the RFP, so there may need to be a future modification to that item. In the infrastructure category, we have a total of about 10.4 million dollars allocated, including new fire station one downtown, completion of the training tower drafting pit and asphalt project, study for police headquarters expansion and relocation, about 2.6 million dollars for road repairs, overlays, and slurry seal, $400,000 for a South Strand rehab study, which is another road project, $4.5 million for the beachfront improvements and police substation project, and then funds to start the peer view bridge rehab study as well as Buccaneer Park facility study. We would like to note that the plan reflects the intent that projects be used to improve infrastructure and the delivery of public safety services, which was in the ordinance pertaining to Measure X that was approved by the voters, as well as the ballot question specifically called out the categories that we would be recommending funding, and that's highlighted on your screen. All of those items are covered in the projects that are being recommended by staff. The ordinance for Measure X also requires a preliminary spending plan for years two through seven, and so we've done that projection attached to the budget. It continues the public safety and homelessness programs for the duration of Measure X and completes the infrastructure projects initiated during year one. We do note that project demand does exceed the anticipated revenues. However, on an annual basis, the budgets will be adjusted to match available revenue to ensure that every annual budget is balanced. We will be seeking additional funding from state and federal grants, developer fees, CIP funds, et cetera, to make up the difference. But in the end, if there aren't enough funds, the peer view bridge project is the one we've identified that may need to be removed to make sure that we do not oversubscribe Measure X. Measure X also requires that we look at and disclose potential borrowing. We are not anticipating any bond financing since it's only a seven-year measure. However, there could be internal borrowing or an advance from future Measure X receipts that would be subject to all existing city policies and approval by the city council at the time that is needed. Measure X does include a citizens oversight committee. They reviewed the spending plan at their March 21st, 2019 meeting. They received very detailed presentations on all three major components of the budgets: the police and homeless-related efforts, the emergency medical technician program, and revised service delivery model, and the infrastructure budget. And they voted unanimously, with one member absent, to endorse the spending plan and recommend approval to city council. And so now Brian Thomas will be presenting the CIP budget.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. I'm Brian Thomas. I'm the city engineer, presenting our CIP budget for the fiscal year 2019-20. Please excuse me, I'm a little under the weather, so if you can't hear me, just throw something at me and I'll try to speak up. Let's see. So, our programs for our CIP this year include Transnet, thoroughfare and signals, drainage districts, citywide drainage, street gas tax, SB1 parks, municipal buildings, water, sewer, harbor, miscellaneous grants, and Measure X fund. Our total budget for this year is approximately 205 million dollars. Thank you. Our pie chart showing how things are broken out. The only change would be in the sewer from the last update. We added additional money to cover a new sewer project that we talked about for the RDO basins. In our Transnet fund, we have 24 operating, existing, new, and future projects, which include street and slurry seal and overlay program, our railroad crossing safety improvements, the North Coast Highway Bridge seismic retrofit project, the Douglas Bridge seismic retrofit project, coastal rail trail, and the peer view way bridge replacement preliminary design report. And as you can see, our slurry seal overlay programs and our peer view projects are also be supplemented with Measure X money. We do have grant funds with Transnet as matched funds, and part of the work included the ADA improvements at Libby Lake Center, as well as the mainline crossing. We currently have about a million dollars in Caltrans rail grant that has funded our Mission Avenue crossing. Our streets and gas tax, we have nine operating, existing, new, and future projects, which include unscheduled signals, streetlights, sidewalk repairs, streets and median upgrades, and tree trimming. Our SB1 gas tax has eight projects in it, including slurry seal, overlay, ADA improvements with our overlay project, and our storm drain improvements. And again, as mentioned before, projects, the slurry seal and asphalt overlay are also funded through Transnet and Measure X. We have our pavement management program, which helps us develop which streets and which neighborhoods for each year to program for slurry seal to prolong our life, as well as our overlay to prolong the street life as well. Our slurry seals for the upcoming year are estimated about 30 cents per square foot compared to $2 a square foot for the overlays. Our fiscal year 1920 budget is 1.7 million dollars in SB1 revenues, a half a million in Measure X, and 150,000 in Transnet to fund approximately 75 lane miles of slurry seal. And we have little under 2.5 million of SB1, little over 2 million of Measure X, and 800,000 in Transnet for 30 lane miles of overlay. Our thoroughfare signals and thoroughfare and signals projects contain 19 projects, which includes college between Vista Way and Thunder, plant specifications and estimate, Waring and Thunder EIR, and Waring and Old Grove Design. We also have Mission and Myers traffic signal and Mission Gate traffic signal design. Our district and citywide drainage has 11 operating projects, new, existing, and future projects. We have the San Luis Riverway clearing project at 484,000, and our Cleveland storm drain upgrade at 2.1 million dollars. In our parks projects, we have key projects underway with Tyson Street right now. The park restroom is currently underway, so is Joe Baldorama Park improvements. We also have Buccaneer Park facility study and the Parkmaster plant fee study to be upgraded. In the harbor project, we have J dock replacement, we have SB8 restroom remodel, the harbor tunnel improvements, and the docks and extra storage. Under the municipal buildings and community facilities, we have 30 projects. The key ones include the fire training tower, the lifeguard towers, and fire station number one design. With fire station number one and the fire training tower, those will be supplemented with Measure X. In addition to fire station number one, we will be looking for homeland security grants and others for the emergency operations center we hope to build. Our miscellaneous city capital projects include 13 different projects, including the El Corazon Aquatic Center, sand replacement, the Fire Mountain Underground Utilities, and the Arts Commissions. And as you can see there at the bottom, we will be bringing a separate budget item in October for the El Corazon Aquatic Center and community rooms construction, which would be 100% budgeted from bond proceeds. Our grants is our next one with seven projects in it, including the Douglas Bridge seismic retrofit, the Coast Highway Bridge replacement, the raised median Douglas Avenue, the airport taxiway, and the coastal rail trail design. And as Deanna had mentioned earlier, our Measure X projects include the fire station EOC relocation, training tower, street restoration, slurry seal, the South Strand rehab, the police department headquarters expansion, rehab concrete design study, beachfront improvements, Buccaneer Beach restroom improvements, as well as a new type one ambulance. There are a number of these projects that are also continue to be budgeted through Transnet, gas tax, or developer impact fees. We do have a number of unfunded future CIP projects that we will get to as time and money present. One of the things that we did add in was the peer view bridge construction at 26.5 million dollars, which again will be subject to budget as we move forward. So, all total, we have in excess of 129 million dollars in unfunded future CIP projects. I'd like to ask Lindsay to come up now. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayor, council members. I'm Lindsay Leahy, with the principal water engineer with the Water Utilities Department. Our proposed capital improvements expenditure for fiscal year 20, a total of 161 million dollars. These come from our water and sewer fixed asset replacement and connection funds. I'd like to note that based off of council's direction at our April budget workshop, we included 2.5 million dollars for the relocation of the sewer pipe from the Loma Alta Creek into Oceanside Boulevard as directed. Our water and recycled water program includes 24 existing and new projects. I'd like to highlight that a main goal from council to our department is to increase local water supply to 50% by the year 2030. So, a majority of these projects are pure water, Oceanside project, as well as our recycled water infrastructure projects, are really aimed at meeting that goal by 2030. The remainder of our projects are based on rehabilitation and replacement for the city. As always, we like to seek additional funding sources for our projects. One that we were recently awarded was the Mission Basin groundwater purification facility, well expansion, and brine minimization. This will include adding two additional production wells from our groundwater basin, as well as process optimization for the, for our plant. At this current time, we have nine submitted and being reviewed applications or will be submitted by the end of the month, so we're really hitting those grants hard right now. Our goal as part of this next fiscal year is to complete the design of the recycled water infrastructure and begin construction. This will include 20 miles of purple pipe, two storage tanks, and two pump stations throughout the city. And finally, for water, we will include a new project for pure water Oceanside. This will produce 4.5 million gallons a day of advanced treated water and include groundwater injection wells for the city. And as always, we continue to look at ways to improve our existing infrastructure to increase our reliability. Three projects that over, that include that are downtown water replacement, our reservoir seismic upgrades, and our WIS electrical upgrades. For our sewer side, we have 32 existing and new projects this year. Most of these are pipeline rehabilitation projects. And I'd like to add that we included 2.5 million dollars, as I mentioned before, in that third to last line, which is pipeline rehabilitation program. And again, that's to relocate the sewer line that's currently in Loma Alta Creek into Oceanside Boulevard, as was directed by council at the April workshop. Most of our projects are aimed at centralizing our sewer processes. These include the Buccaneer Lift Station and Force Main, and our other projects are aimed at rehabilitation of our systems. As mentioned, our Buccaneer Lift Station and Force Main, which are going to be located at our Los Lina wastewater treatment plant, this will send all flows to that treatment that are currently going to that treatment plant to our central location at San Luis Rey Water Reclamation Facility. And as I mentioned with water, we have the same goal with sewer, to continue to increase the reliability of our system and look at upgrades and replacement of our sewer infrastructure. And with that, that concludes our capital improvement program presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we'll go to the public.
First speaker is Nick Ritchie, to be followed by Cindy Rocco, to be followed by Robert Camo Gleisberg.
Council members, mayor, good evening. In this chamber, months ago, audience members applauded the city council's decision to table the Melrose project. And indeed, you were applauded again this evening, and rightfully so. The council saw this project, the Melrose project, as a want and knew it could certainly spend its resources better elsewhere on needs to benefit more citizens of Oceanside. The whole Melrose situation was quite public and enjoyed the scrutiny of the public. But now, tonight, you will be voting into existence a project that saw very little public scrutiny, if any. This looks very familiar, because you saw. I tend to follow things. I actually read this a couple times, but I missed that little box at the bottom that says, "Separate item from capital improvement project budget, August 2019 for 100% budget from bond proceeds." That was a surprise to me. Certainly was. And then once again, the tide gets issued last week, and lo and behold, there it is. Work continues on the planned aquatic centers, blah, 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 with a, with a completion date. I, I'm not the most informed person, but I bet I'm pretty informed about what's going on. I actually read the budgets, and this was a big surprise to me. What happened to public input about this project? We just got out of bond debt, and you intend to indebted us for 30-plus million dollars in bonds for a 30-year period for a want, not a need. How is this a need? How many of the 176,000 citizens of Oceanside will benefit? Speculation of the center earning revenue is dubious at best. Where's the 1 million dollars coming from for pool maintenance? I'm sure you do not fund your personal finances through massive debt. If you are using your own finances and spend a significant amount of money on primarily wants and not your needs, you would become bankrupt, especially borrowing money. With the council in effect dissolving the homeless ad hoc committee's ability to generate recommendations, the city council creating homeless services without community input, and now selecting a project without community input that will indebted the city for a project benefiting few of the citizens, it appears as though the citizens are now being ignored. I urge you to halt all plans to indebted the citizens to the El Corazon bond debt. Thank you.
Cindy Rocco, to be followed by Camo.
Honorable counsel, sorry about that. First of all, just for the record, I completely, my understanding of this, completely disagree with any internal loans that impact X at all. That was just relative to something I think that you had said earlier. So, right now, I just had a key question about, we're using Measure X for two FTEs for this salary, and then it's only going to be, have we projected in what that's actually going to be adding to our operating budget once that seven-year expires when the community may not vote Measure X in, depending on how the money is being used? So, I just wanted to know if, if there was an analysis, I didn't get to read 300 pages, but as far as what that cost is and what the projected expenses are over the lifetime with benefits and pension liabilities, et cetera, and is that just going to come back? We need to be prepared to have that in our operating budget unless we fire two FTEs at the end of seven years. But I don't think we can bank on Measure X. So, I just want to make sure. And then also, there was just some city council policy about operating budgets, OB-9, and it did say that personnel, personnel-related expenditures are our largest amount of our operating budget, and that regular FTEs must come from the operating budget. So, I don't know how we're planning on the FTE, especially because I know that we went into a hiring freeze, we increased the amount, percentage of employee contributions, and all of these things to rein in. So, I just take caution on that, and thank you.
Camo, to be followed by Matt Mathis, to be followed by Rob Howard.
Honorable mayor, deputy mayor, honorable council members, Robert Camo Gleisberg, 3025 Sonia Court. I want to thank the mayor for giving me a little extra time last time when I went overboard a little bit. This basically talks about what would happen if we had a recession. As you're all aware, we've had 10 years, 120 months of success. The Measure X is another seven years or another 84 months. We've never had an extended growth in revenue for over 20 or over 200 months. That said... When I left off last time, this is what I showed, the revenues and the expenditures of Measure X for the entire seven years, but with nothing in between. In other words, these are just the gross totals, and you can see we've got a growth every year going into that. So, let's dig down a little further and see why. I provided a complete set to the staff. You can see that the infrastructure budget is where all the expenditures are taking place, and for 2021 all the way through 2223, the amount of revenues actually are exceeded by the infrastructure component alone. That means that the city council is going to have to figure out where the extra money's coming from, because fire, police, and parks and rec aren't even displayed there. So, this thing about advancing money is going to have to be addressed by the council next year. This shows the comparison of the budget you're going to prove tonight with the budget that will come forward next year. Next year's where you're going to have to address that 13 million dollars in infrastructure totals compared to the annual revenues of 11 and come up with the balance of the funds. If you were to have presented to the taxpayers a revised modified ballot measure, it would have been the one down below, not the one that's been presented up above. And you can see improved general city services is buried underneath. That is your responsible spending pledge, and going forward, it's your responsibility. You're responsible to the voters, and you're accountable to the voters for what you do not only this year, but in the years subsequent. And next year's going to be the one that's going to be hard. And I got to compliment Michelle Lawrence and Deanna Larson for being instrumental in working with me to present these informations. I'm a supporter of Measure X, and I certainly want to make sure that my concerns are heard by the city council, because you're the ones that are going to be making the decisions.
Matt Mathis, to be followed by Rob Howard, to be followed by Janet Batchelor.
Mayor, council, and city manager's office, I appreciate the time. My name's Matt Mathis. I'm a resident in South Oceanside. I'm also the vice chair of the Measure X committee, and I've been with Riverside City Fire Department as a fire captain for over 16 years. When we had the presentation from the fire chief and the police chief, and we talked about the needs assessment, I was understood that they had a lane that they had to work in based off of what the reality is or what the needs are. And... And when you look at what the Measure X flyer is that went to everyone's houses, it was sold as supporting public safety. And I know that there are other additional things that are put on there, and what I would say the budget for the Measure X is proposing so far is shoring up those needs. The staffing model with the ambulance, the emergency response ambulances, and the additional staffing with the paramedic on the truck company, that is a good start. But when you talk to the fire department, and I understand the staffing needs, I understand the resource needs and the facility needs, it's a start. And it is going to become incumbent on the city council to really address those things and talk to the fire department and the labor group and address the actual staffing issues and the resources that we have with the engine companies and the number of stations. If you drive from the base down to Carlsbad, you can see the development in the city, and you can see how much is going into the city, and it's a great thing. And being a resident here, I support the development, I support the roads and the potholes and the schools and the playgrounds and everything else. I have a toddler, I take him to the playgrounds here, and all those things are needed. But I also need to make sure that I have enough police officers with enough hours to be able to patrol the streets and make sure that the park is safe. I need to know that if there's a fire down the street from my house, the unit isn't in Carlsbad doing training, because the training facility here is inadequate. So, the things that were addressed are public safety issues, and they 100% need to be taken care of. The city I work for passed a tax measure a few years ago, and it really was the game-changer for our department. We had apparatus that were falling apart, we had staffing that we were having to cut, and it changed everything for us. And working for a city like that with a council who's engaged and a community that's behind us made a huge difference for us. And now, we're getting the truck companies, we're getting the new engine companies, we've increased the staffing levels to what the national standard is and what the requirement is of two firefighters inside and two firefighters outside. The model that we proposed and that the fire chief proposed starts to begin to take care of those things. And increasing a paramedic, increasing a fourth person on the truck company is a good start, but it's definitely not the solution. And I would stand in support of the budget, but also encourage the council to engage with the fire chief and the local group and make sure that the other issues are being addressed and move forward.
Thank you, Mayor, council, city manager, and the staff. I want to say I really do appreciate the time. My name is Rob Howard, in Rancho del Oro, 4907, Composition Court in Oceanside. First, I want to say that as a member of the Measure X Committee, I really do appreciate the work that went into presenting an overall plan that will allow us to address some of the issues, and I want to stress some, because we do have a long way to go. However, we are making strides. I appreciate Camo and his presentation to really talk about the nuts and bolts of where we need to really stay focused on what's happening later. I understand the staff will be making adjustments, I think we need to make that clear. There will be adjustments every year. And I appreciate Matt highlighting the fact that we do have some specific areas around public safety that we can begin to look at and work on. I wanted to just touch on really quickly that one of the things that I am hoping that we can find room in the budget is to actually start looking at the bench. When I say the bench, I'm talking about we have a number of young people in our high schools and in our local community colleges at Maricosta that can benefit from our EMT program, that can benefit from that training that they get when they go through these particular programs. And right now, one of those areas is our explorer program that's in the high schools. That explorer program gives access to young people who may not have had any idea about these jobs, about these careers, I shouldn't say jobs, I call them careers. And this will give us an opportunity. So, one of the things I have actually, outside of the Measure X Committee, again, I'm in support of the budget and in support of the work that we're doing, but I really do want us to find, currently, there's $30,000, my understanding, that the fire department is spending on the explorer program. That does not get us the depth that we need to ensure that all of our schools have access to this program. And that training can also help them to get a foundation for their learning that will also help them for those water positions that we're talking about. Base-level knowledge between the math and the science is critical for a number of the careers that are going forward. So, I'm just here to ask for your support of us looking at somewhere in the area of $100,000 for the fire department specifically to ensure that every high school has an active and robust explorer program, and even consider expanding it to a point to where we can look at those other jobs that you have coming available in the city of Oceanside. Thank you.
Janet Batchelor.
Good evening, Mayor Weiss and council members. First, I want to thank the city manager and deputy mayor, Feller, for responding so quickly to my email that I sent them today. The email was concerning the ongoing gifting of general fund money to four selected nonprofit organizations. My primary concern is that the money was intended to be one-time funding in FY1516. The organizations were unable to secure other means of funding, so the general fund funded them for another year and put them on final notice. The city manager's memo dated April 10, 2016 clearly states, in quote, "The local service providers will be put on final notice that they must search for alternative, sustainable funding sources." And each year thereafter, the funds are referred to as council-directed. When did the council approve the ongoing funding of $233,000 each year out of the general fund for these four pre-selected nonprofits? Thank you very much.
There are no more speaker slips?
With that, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. And first, if staff could respond to some of the questions, I think there were some questions regarding budgeted items out of Measure X, and, you know, I understand that if there is not matching, additional funds, that we will be seeking either through grants and stuff, that there will be changes to the bottom, to the ultimate budget, because our wants, in terms of a list, the wish list, far exceeds how much we'll actually be generating out of Measure X. And so, could you please explain how we are not suggesting at all, in any way, shape, or form, that we are relying on yet another similar Measure X in, say, six or seven years?
Thank you, councilmember Sanchez, mayor and councilmembers, Diana Larson, Assistant City Manager. So, as I did mention in my presentation, in terms of overall spending, there are more funds in the long-term expenditure plant, more projects to be funded than there will be funds available. However, the Peer View Bridge by itself is a large enough project that that one won't be able to go forward unless there is sufficient outside funds so that Measure X only spends what comes in from Measure X. In addition to that, as was mentioned by Mr. Gleisberg, we do look at year two, that we could have more infrastructure projects budgeted than the anticipated revenue. That is because of the anticipated construction cost for Fire Station Two, excuse me, Fire Station One replacement, which would be a construction project that would need to be funded over two fiscal years during, due to the construction timeframe, but the cost actually would need to be paid over more than that. In order to accomplish that, we would bring an item to the Citizens Oversight Committee and then to the city council for approval, based on the track record of revenues coming in from Measure X, to advance some funds to fund that construction project, and then it would be repaid out of future-year Measure X funds. That's something that we would thoroughly vet, we would analyze the financials to make sure we are comfortable with that recommendation, but it's just due to the fact that the size of the project exceeds what could be funded in a single year for Measure X. And then, regarding the last issue, and that is that approximately a third of the budget that would go towards ongoing costs for police and fire enhanced services, as well as the homeless outreach team and homeless programs. And many of those are scalable programs that we could just stop operating, to the extent that some staff would be added, and the programs have been structured in a way that they can be dialed back. For the hot team, there are annual retirements happening through the police department, that those positions then could be filled into other vacancies rather than new police officers being hired to fill those vacancies. So, they could be absorbed through attrition in the police department should Measure X not be extended past the seven years, which would be a separate voter action. And with regard to the fire department, it's also structured in a way so that that can be dialed back should there not be funding to continue past the seven years.
So, basically, any full-time FTEs that we, as somebody called them, full-time employment type positions, any that are being created or proposed to be created to address public safety concerns will not go beyond the seven years, is that correct? I understand they're going to be just five or six years, is that correct?
It's, that's correct. It is funded for the seven years of Measure X, but could not be continued on unless additional funding's located, or it could be dialed back to fit the funding that would be available in Measure X goes away.
Thank you. This is, we have had a workshop on this, and there were a lot of questions that I asked council members. Each council member had a chance to talk to various department heads, and we all got a chance to ask a lot of questions, because obviously, we would love, we wish that we had more money than we have. But bottom line is, we always have to pass a balanced budget every year. We have to try to impact as many issues as possible. These are quality-of-life issues as well as public safety issues. And I believe that what we have before us is a good balance with respect to our challenged neighborhoods that mostly rely on CDBG funding, funds that are basically generated from the census tracts and poverty levels, those funds do go to those challenged neighborhoods. And the programs that address those issues have been doing such a great job. So, Vista Community Clinic, and I can't think of all the others, Boys and Girls Club, all the other organizations, they do a really, really great job for us in addressing these issues that ultimately, if they did not exist, we would be seeing higher crime levels, higher victim levels. So, I have to say that I wish we even had more money to address, you know, more of the issues that we have in these neighborhoods. So, bottom line, I guess what I'm saying here is that I believe that this is a good budget that has been presented by our city manager and the department head, so I'm going to go ahead and move that we adopt the resolutions and approve...
Staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation, I guess, there's a lot, there's a whole statement here. I'm going to go ahead and let the city attorney go ahead and read it all off, but bottom line is, I believe that we do have a good proposal here. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, members of the community who stepped up, who served on the committee and are acting in partnership with city staff to really ensure that these tax funds that are temporary are not overspent, and I really take that seriously. And thank you, Camo, for your presentation and sitting down with me and spending all that time on that. I totally agree with you. We need to present and we need to prepare for a balanced budget, because at the end of seven years, this is going away. And with my communications with staff, if we haven't made enough resources to accommodate the projects listed, from what I remember, we're going to remove the peer item, which will cover and balance us out. So, I just want to, I want to make that clear. Also, in reference to the aquatic center, I agree with you, that is a want, it is not a need, it is something that our community really, really wants, and I respect that and I appreciate that, but I cannot and I will not get on board with re-bonding the civic center funds if we don't have a game plan on how that aquatic center is going to be managed, how the maintenance is going to be paid for. So, as that comes forward in the coming months and we involve the community, I hope that city staff can present that game plan that I can get on board with, because at this juncture, I cannot get on board with re-bonding that without a game plan in place. We moved on a council agenda item to have a homeless working program, and city staff worked hard and sent out RFPs to, gosh, I think 50, 60, 70 nonprofits, and it's something that just didn't make sense for them to move forward on and take on that liability. So, there's 100 grand just sitting here that I would like to attempt to reallocate, and I just have a question about that. I heard mention of an explorer program that I see a lot of value in, I know this is Measure X funds. What would be the process of utilizing pretty much this 100 grand that's not going to go anywhere to assist in giving additional funds to an explorer program and as well as maybe a little bit extra funds to the police department for the encampment efforts?
Councilmember Rodriguez, honorable mayor, councilmembers, we really should go back to the Oversight Committee to make an adjustment to the budget, because we committed to doing that. And we know that at the end of the year, particularly on the homeless programs, we may have a little money left over anyway, so we were planning on going back. But if you wanted to reallocate that $100,000 into something else, we'd probably call a quick meeting of the Oversight Committee, get their blessing, and bring it back to you.
Okay, so I would just like to make a second motion to reallocate that 100 grand to go back to the committee to see where we can best utilize that for our community in reference to infrastructure or public safety.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
An amendment to the first motion, or would that...
There wasn't a second.
So, is it an amendment?
I think it's just direction to staff to... Was there a second to the motion?
There was no second. There was no second.
To councilmember Sanchez's motion.
So, the motion was to move forward with staff's recommendation as outlined in the staff report, there's nine resolutions, there's no second to that?
There is no second to that motion.
I'll second that.
Well, yeah, I was going to second it, but I would ask that we consider what councilmember Rodriguez just...
I would support his direction to the city manager to do that. I don't know whether we need a motion.
Yeah, okay. I just had a couple of things. One thing, could Ms. City Manager, could you explain what you responded to Janet about the $233,000?
Sure, I'd be happy to, Deputy Mayor, all members, councilmembers. We received an email asking us about the contracts that have been renewed. These are for youth development programs out in our most challenged communities. At one point, we did have a CalGrip grant that paid for these services. These services were in lieu of paying staff members to do them, so they're very needed in these challenged communities. Unfortunately, the CalGrip money went away, so we came back to council, I believe it was fiscal year 1516, and we asked the council to allow us to backfill those monies, because we thought it was really important to the community. And the direction at that point was for the department and the nonprofits to do everything they could to try to find alternative grant money. They were unable to do so. City staff looked, the nonprofits looked, and so we had to make the decision about, you know, how important this was to the community, and I thought it was, as did this council. So, in terms of the approvals and to speak to Janet's question, each budget year, the council actually specifically approved those items. So, that's why they're in the budget.
So, is there a way we can look at next year, go do this budget this time, but have a plan for, or maybe start looking now for the grant funding or the, I kind of thought it was under some of the CDBG...
It was never CDBG-funded, to the best of my knowledge, we never did do that. We could, I mean, we could go out for an RFP. The issue is, there are only so many nonprofits who work in town that have the expertise to work in those communities, so even doing an RFP will likely to get, you know, the same nonprofits responding. That's the challenge.
Okay, so we can investigate it for the next budget cycle?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely. And we're constantly looking for grants for those options, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Water, hello? I'd like to know, are we on track with these expenditures for water independence by 2030, 50%?
Deputy Mayor, Honorable Mayor, council, yes, we are on track with that. By the completion of our pure water project, we should be at 32% of local water with pure water. And then with the addition of recycled water, that would increase to 24% of our local supply, bringing us to a total of actually 56% local supply of water within the city.
Boy, that is a great job considering I thought it was going to be nearly impossible. What, was it 10 years ago or something that we approved that? In the infrastructure, the CIP for all the pipes that are running through our city, I just want to make mention that we don't have the pipe break of the day in Oceanside. We definitely have, we're ahead of the curve and I attribute that to the leadership in water and sewer, so, thank you.
I want to commend staff for the job that's been done to make sure our budget is prepared for the next downturn in revenue and a possible recession. I think we're doing everything we can to make sure we have PERS payments covered and we're trying to eliminate our liabilities and really prepare for that possible recession. So thank you, staff. The efforts that the city manager has taken are incredible and I think we're going to be prepared very well for any kind of negative revenues that we have. Also, I was very encouraged tonight to have three members of the Measure X committee, I think, to have their participation and support for Measure X. And maintaining the integrity of Measure X funds is extremely important. As we've seen recently with Sandag and a voter passed the measure in 2004 that's being changed after it was approved by voters, I am determined not to let that happen with Measure X. It's going to be used for what we said it was going to be used for. Otherwise, I will never feel comfortable going back and asking for another tax. So thank you again for your input and your participation on that. The level of expertise and knowledge we have on that commission is incredible, so thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yeah, I would just like to remove my motion from what I understand is if and when there is surplus funds from this budget, those funds would have to go back before the committee. So if the 100,000 is not used, then, or more, we'll be going back to you guys for your approval on where those funds would go. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
This time we'll go to item 18, which is adoption of a resolution, resolution adopting fees for water meter equipment and various services. And we'll open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
Staff only.
Staff only. Staff.
No public.
Staff.
with Water Utilities. Tonight, we're here to discuss our recommendation. Whoop. Thank you. Technical difficulties, there we go. Our recommendation to have city council adopt a resolution adjusting fees for water meter equipment, services, and equipment provided by the city to fully recover our costs to provide such services. A little bit of background, back in 2004, August, council adopted a resolution to adopt fees and the goal was cost recovery and it was achieved. Again, in March 2017, very similar resolution, we added the cost of recycled plan check. And tonight, it's not much different. A little bit of analysis, so periodically, we review the fees to make sure that we are collecting sufficient fees to recover our costs. Our costs have changed, in some cases, they've gone up, in some cases, they've gone down. All of these fee adjustments are reflecting changes borne by the city and allow us to recover our costs in compliance with both Prop 218 and the California State Constitution. I note on the fiscal impact, I don't want to bore everybody at the late hour, but the one thing I would want to point out is we put an RFP out, we'll be bringing it back to you in August for final approval, but for door tagging, which affects the most people, it's over 14,000 events a year, those are folks that are unable to pay their bills, so we give them a two-day notice to pay their bill or their water will be turned off. Previously, a staff member would get a door tag, go to the residence, hang the door tag, notify the resident, and we've actually been able, and we'll be bringing this forward to you in August, to find a third-party vendor that will do this at a reduced cost. And the good news about that is it saves our most vulnerable population, the folks that can't pay their bill in the first place, they are required to pay a fee for the door tag hanger. And it's going down from $31 to just over 20, just under 23. So we think that's a success. The bad news is that reduces revenue by about $120,000. The good news is it also reduces our costs by about that much. The net impact of these fees that we're asking you to adopt tonight is about a $3,000 increase in revenues for the department. So our recommendation is, staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution adjusting fees for water meter equipment, installation, utility services, and equipment provided by the city in order to fully recover the costs associated with providing these services and equipment. And with the mayor's permission, I'll be at sidebar for questions.
This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. This is cost recovery. This is exactly how much it costs us to do these lines of work. So I'm going to go ahead and move adoption. Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. We'll go to item 20. How many speakers do we have?
We have 10 speakers. As I call your name, please make your way up to the lectern and we have seats available for you to sit down. Our first speaker is Fabio Marchi, to be followed by Becky Rap, to be followed by Cindy Rocco.
I'm here today because I'm a very frustrated customer with the City of Oceanside. And just today was the devastating news that the fire department ironically made me burn $10,000 in materials and waste 30 days of my work. I know, we don't want to hear bad news or people talking bad other people, but I felt that during the process, I've been discriminated with the city. And nobody want to hear the word discrimination. I know, John, I know what you said to me. But I've been discriminated in the sense that it came to my ears that city staff has been instructed not to talk to me. I was instructed that I was not allowed to go to the fire department to do businesses as any regular citizen. And if that is not discrimination, what that is? Further, I've been dealing with the absence of resolve and expedite. I'm putting a project in South Oceanside, a very expensive project, four UNS, three-story, all in my own, I have a harmony loan on it, and the city staff, not all of it, because some city staff, they're grateful, they help me in my projects, thank you to all of them. But there are a few rotten apples that they are not helping me to succeed. And if I don't succeed, guess what? The city will decay because I'm bringing revenues to the city, almost 300,000 at the end of my job. You want to be generating 300,000 to the city. And I was not being treated fairly by the city. And especially Michelle, you did not treat me fairly, you ignored my calls, you just didn't intervene. I don't know why, if it's any personal. I know I have an accent and some people have a hard time to deal with me and I'm a personality that I defend what I think is right. I'm an engineer and I want to succeed and I'm asking you for, give me the opportunity to reconsider the decision that the fire department, my belief, and the manufacturer that installed the pipes and several engineers, they're saying the fire department is wrong. But I have nobody to ask because nobody's allowed to talk to me for what I hear. So I'm asking you to give me the opportunity to you to demonstrate that I'm not doing anything wrong. I'm putting the best pipes that they are to supply a fire sprinkler system. I'm putting four risers, when I was told that I was not enabled to do the four risers. So the whole thing was totally mishandled by the fire department.
Please wrap it up, Mr. Marchi.
Yes. The fire chief is absent for two weeks, nobody in the fire department to respond to me. So I'm a frustrated guy. Who is going to talk about fire? The mayor or anybody else? Nobody knows the specifics.
Please conclude your comments. Thank you.
Okay. I'm asking for help. Please guide me to what I have to do to survive on this project.
Thank you, please wrap it up.
My email is Fabio.
Thank you. We give you my email. Thank you.
Thank you.
Becky Rap, to be followed by Cindy Rocco.
Good evening, city councilmembers and mayor. I am Becky Rap. I am very concerned about the safety of businesses and residents in Oceanside after reading the news articles and TV coverage of six marijuana extraction labs blowing up in San Diego where I work. One example of the media coverage went like this. On 5/8/19, DEA investigates lab extraction explosion. DEA Narcotics Task Force found 220 small butane canisters in and around the house that caused a series of mini explosions, destroying the house and blackening the neighboring house, sending three to the hospital with serious injuries. DEA noted how volatile the marijuana extraction process is. It is this process that creates the concentrates, edibles, and vape cartridges that are popular among teens. And the news showed the burned pot plants and other debris running down the street into the gutters. Imagine the contamination of the water and the streets where it ran along. Two weeks later, the media coverage covered explosions in El Cajon, Warner Springs, and Point Loma. Last week, the DEA raided its sixth extraction lab in six weeks, this time in Lemon Grove, which the DEA describes as "very sophisticated." And I have a handout with pictures with large machinery and quantities of ethanol. Dangerous levels of combustible gas forced authorities to air the building out for half an hour before federal agents could search, and the city and the San Diego County hazmat crews hauled large quantities of ethanol, toxic, flammable, and colorless from the site. I recognize all of these extraction labs were unpermitted, but the level of machinery at the site suggests that a permitted extraction lab would not be different. I would respectfully suggest that the City of Oceanside not proceed with permitting these extraction labs until you have a report from the county hazmat staff recording the appropriate resources that would be necessary to protect citizens. Thank you.
Cindy Rocco, to be followed by John Bodworth, to be followed by Suzanne Hume.
Honorable counsel, thank you very much. Right now, I just, I'm going to put this out here and see if there's two leaders at this dis who are brave enough to make a motion to establish a charter commission for the city that would explore a code of ethics, an ethics board and/or possible ombudsman, contribution limits, and term limits, and also the possibility of primaries to narrow down candidates in an election. So I'd like the council who would support that because there's a growing motion in the community for all of these items, not selective individual ones. Thank you.
John Bodworth, to be followed by Suzanne Hume, to be followed by Lee Phillips.
I'm back again to talk about no idling. I've talked to, I think, pretty much all of you about no idling and the need to reduce air pollution. The American Lung Association recently came out that San Diego has the fifth worst smog in the United States because of, due to ozone and particulate matter. So, you know, we're near the coast and we think we have great air, but we really don't. So anything that we can do to reduce the amount of particulate matter and other pollution like carbon dioxide into the air, we need to pursue that. We've worked with Vista Unified and Ocean Standard Unified and Carlsbad Unified School Districts. Vista has moved forward with a no-idling resolution and Carlsbad and Oceanside are going to be following very quickly. So I would ask the council to please put no-idling resolution or ordinance on the agenda for the next meeting. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Victoria. Air pollution is especially harmful to people with pre-existing conditions such as cancer, heart, and lung problems, diabetes, and other conditions. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for your time, Suzanne Hume. We started a nonprofit, CleanEarthForKids.org, and we're here today to ask you to please put a no-idling ordinance on the next agenda. The reason that we need an ordinance is because it's very clear that, well, for many reasons, but I'm just going to talk right now to if there are police officers in the room, okay, or law enforcement. Here's the deal. We don't want people idling in their cars, ready to take off, around children. We just don't. It's not smart. It's not safe. So we need a no-idling ordinance. When we nicely ask, Victoria's been with me before because I'm also a reading specialist, and we've asked people that are backed into sidewalks and putting their pollution everywhere wearing big, heavy jackets, they'll sit at the Y by Empressa School for, I don't know, three and four hours in the morning, idling. And they don't care if there are people with moms with strollers, dads with strollers, they don't care. They want to keep idling and wearing their big jacket and pumping the air on. And that's why we need a no-idling ordinance for the city or another reason. So we are going to get start-stop technology grants for our police officers and first responders. We're actively working on that now. That's happening in New York and in Texas and other places. There's Stealth Power and Grip Idle, and it pays for itself in one year because you can keep everything on and our police officers and first responders are not sucking in all of the terrible exhaust. So since I've had the pesticide exposure, it hurts, it burns. So I'm the canary and I'm telling you, it's not good stuff. And we've done a ton of research, the kids have as well. One minute of idling produces more carbon monoxide than three packs of cigarettes, has benzene, all kinds of things, the kids can tell you. Anyway, the point is, we, our police officers do so much for us and yet we, you know, we give them fancy police cars with bulletproof doors, right? But yet they're standing out here in all of this idling. So it only makes sense and an ordinance will pay for itself. We have ideas because it's done everywhere, well, not everywhere, lots of other places. So of course, there's provisions for if someone, it's extreme weather, they need to operate equipment for a disability. Anyway, so, but, you know, we say park and walk, right, if they can, to turn it off instead of sitting there idling in their big jackets or whatever. Russ Cunningham is just amazing. Anyway, I can talk to you more later. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Lee Phillips.
Anyway, the kids have gone home because it's getting later. Thank you so much. But if you'll put it on the agenda, they'll be back to talk. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Good evening, counsel and mayor. Arlene Hammerschmidt, 2390 Ivy Road in ruralish Fire Mountain. I have a question regarding the rent of city-owned land. Item number 10 was for the San Diego Humane Society, or NSPCA, for doing three things: the animal shelter, animal control services, and use of city-owned land for a total of over a million bucks a year. How much of that was rent for city-owned land? I didn't see it in the staff report. I looked. If we could have an answer to that, that would be much appreciated. And in comparison, I understand that the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce pays the City of Oceanside $1 per year for the city-owned land that they use. Let's have a comparison. This is apples and apples. Thank you.
There are no more speakers.
So at this time, we'll go to item 21, which is a request by Councilmember Rodriguez and myself. So Councilmember Rodriguez, if you want to lead it off.
Thank you. So after being elected this last year, I've had the opportunity to make some adjustments in my life to accommodate being an elected representative of the City of Oceanside and really start to get the groove. And what I've come to realize over this short tenure is this is not a part-time position. This is a full-time position. We have a very big city, large population, pushing 180,000. We have a general budget in excess of 157 million, and we're responsible for a lot. And it is irresponsible, in my opinion, to continue with a charter that labels council positions as part-time. I would like to consider a future workshop where we can get community involvement, engagement to explore modifying that charter, which would require a ballot initiative, which would label a council member as a full-time position, because it is. It just, that's the reality of it. And for all future candidates that run for office, they need to be aware that this is a full-time position. With that, it's been brought to my attention by constituents over and over again with the potential of looking at term limits as an item to be discussed. And so today's council agenda item is honestly, just to keep it simple, is to vote with my colleagues to move forward on a workshop where we can discuss this, in a nutshell. That's it.
Very public.
There's two speakers. Our first speaker is Cindy Rocco to be followed by Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Honorable counsel, Cindy Rocco. Today, we had a, I believe it was a priest that gave a prayer over this council about looking at numbers and how you're here to put community over self. There are plenty of people within this room that would do these jobs for nothing. It's been the job that it's been for how many years? I understand your situation, I mean, with a family of nine, I mean, I can understand that. But I also know people have alternative revenue streams that can compensate that. And also with the salaries, if you add in benefits, health benefits, that could be anywhere from 15 to 20 for some of our council. And then you add in pension, retirement accounts, et cetera. So the compensation, if you looked at net, for example, one council in 17 was 47,000. And this is with sitting on other commissions as well, so that does bump that up a bit. And then there was one at, oh, that was 16, it was 43,000. There's another one at 45,500. These are past figures. So anyway, it's, the point is, right, it's, you're saying it's a full-time job, but that's a part of what being passionate about the community entails. You have to go, you have to talk to the public, you have to read these things, you have to think through, in the big picture, what's going to be best for all of us, not as individuals. I would rather see if there's going to be a review for increasing in salary, why not give a bonus to some of your frontline employees who are amazing? They're the ones that do this job full-time. And I'm not meaning this to be offensive. I just, this is the reality here, and I just think, I know the caveat of term limits makes this appear to be more palatable. But on the cusp, the precipice of measure X, this is highly, highly insulting. You don't do this. You just don't do this. If you want to do a charter commission that examines all levels of campaign contribution limits and ethics commission and ombudsmen and term limits, now that would be something that I bet you this public would get behind. So I see this as put community over self, and this is a privilege to serve. You just don't know. So, thank you so much.
Good evening. Arlene Hammerschmidt, again, you have all my, my numbers where I live. And on the positive side of this, this is a timely subject. Everybody at this table has an opportunity to create a legacy of transparent and trust, transparency and trust between the city governance and the community. You could hit a home run with a public committee on charter amendments. Not a workshop, public open dialogue, exchange of information. If this goes to workshop separately, really stop infuriating residents with this 2:00 workshop nonsense. That's just a kiss-off. People who really care and want to be involved would be here at 6 because they have to work. People have to work. That would be a public trust item. This is going to require a charter amendment, so update it really, really publicly. Not even any suspicion of, okay, it's 2:00, we're going to try to do this now. And add these topics to staff's direction. They're all equally critical when it comes to elections. Term limits, yes. Talk of the town. People need to talk about that. Limits of campaign donations. San Marcos and Vista has done this. Qualifications for office. We were talking about this with a couple other election offices. Possibly relinquishing a city-held office to run for another one. Code of Ethics for elected and appointed officials. The only appointed officials in this city that has an established code of ethics that I know of is the Planning Commission. Yay, planning's ahead. And primary elections? I think we could afford that. One person would win an election with over 50% of the vote. That would be a true mandate for that candidate. Yes, you have a mandate to put forward your agenda. You have more than 33% of the vote, like when you have five or 15 people running for the same office. So, you know, we have an opportunity for a home run here. Go big. Make a legacy. Make Oceanside transparent and gain the trust of our community. Thank you for your time.
There's no more speakers.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. I have to admit that when I saw this item on the agenda, I was absolutely surprised. This, to serve on a council or a school board or fire district or a water district, it's a public service. It is not trying to get full-time pay. When I first got on the council, I had a full-time job with the Public Defender's Office, working 50, 60 hours a week. I worked that plus this at 40, 40, 40, 50 hours a week for two terms. That is public service. I am absolutely against having a full-time pay for this. There is no other city in the county except for the City of San Diego, which every district is actually, I think, two or three times our city's size, where they have full-time, considered full-time jobs. I work full-time, and I know that a lot of the council members work that many hours, but I do it because I care. I do it because this is my commitment to the community. So I absolutely support going forward with workshop on term limits, maybe even gap, whatever, to explore that and whether the cities do in the San Diego County. But I'm absolutely against putting this on the ballot. I had a chance to talk to Mary Salas about, you know, what do they do? Tulavista is the second-largest city in San Diego County, and they are part-time. Part-time. Of course, every one of them works as many hours as they can. This is, this is what you sign up for. Everybody knows how much you make when you decide to run for public office, especially for city council. So let's move forward on a workshop regarding term limits and maybe even consider a committee, a charter committee. But absolutely not, I cannot support the notion of making a living off of the public dole. I just think that that is the most, I think it would go down, first of all, I think it would go down in flames by the public and anybody that would support this. And there are three people that are going to be running on this as candidate, and candidate three positions that are going to be up in 2020. I'm sure that they will be put down if they say they're really, you know, I mean, what's the suggestion, that you're really running to make money off of this position? And that is not what we should be doing here. This is about public service and making a difference in our communities, a difference in our neighborhoods. So let's move forward on term limits, but, which is something I brought up two years ago and wasn't able to get a second. Hopefully, we'll be able to do a second on that. But absolutely not. This is not, we should not be taking public funds because we can't, we can't, you know, make it on our own. I mean, that doesn't make sense to me.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Want to clarify a few items. Number one, this is not about the council members who are sitting on the dais right now. This is about the future of Oceanside. This is an item that would go on the 2020 ballot and take effect after that and would send a strong message to future residents of our city who want to get involved, who want to run for office. But because of the current setup where, you know, council members have gotten very, very comfortable and maybe don't want that competition, it would open the door for individuals who are working, making a medium income in our city, we're a blue-collar city, that can say, you know what? I can run for office and love this city and be able to pay my bills and represent my city at the same time. Otherwise, you get what you get. You get a dais that has retirees or individuals that can afford to do both. This is not about now. This is about the future of our city and getting a diverse candidacy to run for office so that they can represent the best interests of their district. Again, this is very simple. This is a full-time position. I'm here, clocking in 35 to 45 hours. That's a fact. That's a reality. Other council members, maybe they're only here a couple hours a week. That's on them. I know where I stand and what it takes to be involved and to read the 600 pages of documentation every week to prepare for a council meeting. And the future candidates need to be aware of that. And right now, when they read our charter, they see it's a part-time position, and it's not. I'm merely asking to update the charter to be what it is, and that's a full-time position, regardless of pay. The reality is, it's a full-time position, and they need to be able to take that on to be set up for success.
Councilmember Kine.
Thank you. I, whatever we do, I think I would support some kind of committee or commission and have the public input. I think that's very important. I also, term limits are something that I have put a lot of thought into. I think that is also something we need to discuss. At this point, the question with salary to me is more of an issue. I don't support a salary increase by itself for a few reasons, but I think that's a more fundamental question of what the council's role is right now and what staff's role is. And that would also be something that needs to be looked at. As for just a salary increase, I also probably put at least full-time hours in this position. I'm in a unique position to do that. But whatever we do, I think it's important that we have public input and that we look at important topics such as campaign finance, term limits. It's, I wanted to see how we could structure something like this and how we would go forward with this process. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Thank you. I would agree with Ryan. We, at one time, had redevelopment. It was when I first came on, as well as Councilmember Sanchez. And we had, we actually had made, we're making less money now than we did when we came on in 2000. The issue has not been for me, money. I think it's, I'm, I have been an advocate for no legislative aides and having staff, permanent staff, take care of that. Nobody is doing that except Mayor Weiss. He's the best typist I ever saw. But as far as, so, I'm certainly not in it for the money. I've been doing it for a long time because I really love this community. I will say that term limits, I'm open for that discussion. I'm certainly, I mean, after 18 and a half years, I'm open for it. That's, that's not, you know, I would have been open for it anytime somebody wanted to talk about it. But it's an issue that, for me, I've done this as almost a labor of love for the city. I was, it started when I got here 32 years ago. And I've put a lot of time and effort into knowing a lot about this city. What I think we probably need to consider is, you know, whether What I think we probably need to consider is, you know, whether it's campaign finance reform, I mean, it, it's, it's hard to get elected unless you're wealthy on your own dime. So, I, I'll be willing to discuss that. I'm not really, I don't think, we certainly can't have a pay raise and a legislative aide. I, I mean, that's what the legislative aide does for me, so, I, I'm, I'm, I, I would, I'll be willing to go to, be part of a workshop and, and discuss the parameters, but that's, that's where I stand.
Well, I, I will say, the reason I agreed to participate in this item, it's to direct staff to schedule a workshop to present information about. We're not here to vote a pay raise. We're not here to vote to put it on the ballot. It's to schedule a workshop so we can have the discussion and get input on whether it's these two items, whether it includes the legislative aides and campaign finance reform. I think those are all fair game to have a workshop about. So, to me, it's scheduling a workshop sometime in the future to have those discussions to see, are there things that we should do that would include a charter amendment? I don't know that I would even support them, but I think it's worth having the discussion just simply to see what is our position and what is the public's position on some of these issues. So, I would like that we would schedule a workshop sometime in the future to have that, that broader discussion, and if it's not limited to just the salaries and the term limits of this campaign finance reform, it's to have staff look at some of the other cities, what they do, and come to a workshop and present it so we can have that conversation.
That's a motion, one second. Councilmember Sanchez?
I'd like to bifurcate the full-time question for a workshop, because I, I think that, that is such a, a wrong thing to, to even do, discuss in a workshop. I mean, I work full-time. I work full-time plus as a council member. I did that from day one. I had a full-time job, you know, and I did not have, I had to be in court. And I was here at, at the dais, and I was out there in the community, and I won the most votes because I was out there. So, this whole notion of, oh gee, you know, I want more money to do this job, I think is, is a cop-out, that you did not know that you, what the pay was? I mean, oh my gosh, I mean, how many times did we, at candidate forums, be asked, you know, are you going to be working the required hours even if it's full-time? And we all, every one of us here said, yes, we will, those that ran. So, I am absolutely astounded that we would even consider that for half a second. Yes, we ought to do, look at campaign reform. Yes, we ought to look at term limits. And yes, we ought to have set up a committee to look at charter amendments that are more regular, that is something that, that, that we can, you know, an ethics committee, we need to have, be more transparent. But this whole notion of, I want to get paid to do this job, is absolutely ridiculous. This is public service. Public service. And I, I, I think that we all ought to be just really embarrassed to be bringing it up in the first place. It is absolutely really embarrassing that we, that anybody on this dais would vote to say, oh, give me more money to do this job. This is not that kind of a job. This is public service. And we can do it. Those of us that had full-time jobs, that had to be in the office, not this, you know, staggered hours, we've done it. People have done it. People with businesses have done it, this whole, and I just, I just think it's really ridiculous. So, I would like to bifurcate this question so that I can vote absolutely not that we're going to be asking the public to even look at this. I don't even want to be associated with that question. It's ridiculous.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Well, we have a motion in a second to move forward on a workshop, and I can understand why some council members are frustrated for the charter to be labeled full-time, who are rarely seen in the office. And I, I get that. I get that. It's frustrating and, and very embarrassing. And, and if those, if the shoe fits, wear it. But in the end, it's a full-time job, and I encourage all council members to take it serious as a full-time job. And I would like to move forward on a vote.
So, I've been asked to clarify the motion. So, what, I'll clarify the motion that we would schedule a future council workshop that would provide information to the council and the public on city council salaries, council legislative aides, term limits, and finance, campaign finance reform as it relates to other cities in San Diego County, and we can make a decision from there.
And this ought to be at a 6:00 time so we can get full public participation, not at 2:00.
It's fine.
It's fine. So, we have a motion in a second. Please vote.
I would like the record to reflect that I'm voting absolutely not on getting full-time pay, and yes, on the campaign reform and term limits. Thank you.
Get information. Councilmember Sanchez?
That is how my vote is.
Okay. All right. Motion approved, 4-0.
And with that, we will adjourn to a council workshop at 2:00 on Wednesday, June 12th, on Short-Term Rentals. We are adjourned.